Good evening and welcome to the August 22nd, '24 Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to advise everybody that this meeting is, will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. It being about 7:00 PM, I would like to call the meeting to order and review old and new business. Gabby?
Catherine.
Catherine.
Sure thing. So I guess I'll start with Planner's Report. I sent that to you earlier today. Couple items, departmental business. We are still in the process of onboarding permidies so that people can submit applications electronically. Our initial comments on the beta site are still being integrated. They did ask us to look at a few more things on that. And soon we're going to be getting a zoning board of appeals beta site followed by conservation. So we're still working through that. I have kicked off the public engagement sessions for the MBTA Communities process. I've held several informal as well as one night meetings so far. I've gotten so much really useful information from the residents. I've gotten a lot of feedback, emails, a little bit of everything. And I'm working really hard to tabulate some data points so that people have a little bit more to chew on at the next one, just based off of what I've been hearing so far. I have created a page for MBTA Communities on www.choosefoxborough.com. That's with the UGH at the end. I'm going to be saving all of the materials from this process on that page. And as the process moves on, that it'll be filled out more and more with new documents. The RFP period for consultant for master plan ends next week. So after that, we will be in a position to select a consultant and hopefully get started on an updated master plan for the town starting this autumn. So hopefully we can get some good engagement. I've been told by Paige that that's usually a good time of the year to reach out to people. So hopefully we can get started then. When it comes to economic development activities, we have met informally a few members of the Economic Development Committee and myself to go through some of the binders that were presented to them when those meetings were regular in the past. We'll be going through and updating those. We do need to have some more conversations as a group as regards what should go in, what would be helpful, what is not. Additionally, choosefoxborough.com, as I just mentioned, I'm using that for MBTA Communities. I'm also updating it generally, making sure that the information that's on there is more accurate. It's going to take some time because I am not the best with web design. I'll just say that for sure. And then finally, the Business Development Guide needs to be updated. It's pretty out of date with a former town manager in place and a couple of department heads that have since left. And I also want to make sure that the processes that are laid out there are accurate so that businesses that are looking for assistance can get a good source of information. Opportunities, 131 Moore Street. We did meet with a prospective buyer for the site. They reached back out to us this week. So hopefully we can further that conversation on a potential sale of 131 Moore Street for an industrial use. That would be ideal. We did have a meeting this week with Schneider Electric to discuss the demolition of their, the post-war older portion of the factory on Naposet Avenue. They should be starting that this autumn, finishing up by January, February next year, hopefully. And then after that, they're going to talk about the sale of the property. But for now, they're still saying they're focused on the demolition itself and not on the sale of the property. With the Gillette Stadium area, the Kraft Group met with Town Hall for a pre-filing meeting regarding a new football training center. This is going to take the, well, it's going to take a lot of the pieces and parts that are currently run out of the small training center that's behind the two practice fields. And it's going to move them to a much larger state-of-the-art, say, the art advanced football training center that's going to straddle the northeastern practice field, the upper practice field. Is it upper or lower?
Uh, lower.
Lower. Practice field. And a portion of the parking lot that abuts it. So this will be coming before you all, probably within the next month or two, I'd say. They're hoping to get it constructed before the World Cup, so they're on a tight deadline. And the State Hospital Auditorium, we have been in contact with the legislature. We're still trying to get that building released to the town for redevelopment, but as of now, it's still in limbo. That's about it for the Planner's Report. We have a couple other odds and ends, but we'll discuss those down the line.
Question. Is it your understanding that on the Foxborough company that Schneider will be filing a series of sequential demolition permits or just one demolition permit? And have they, have they filed?
Uh, the way that they laid it out, it seemed to me as though they were just going to seek a demolition permit. I talked to Scott Shippey about it. He has been satisfied with what he's been hearing from them. I don't believe he's issued that permit yet, but they have been in conversation.
And do you have any clarity on what that structure is on the Chestnut Street parking lot down by the shipping entrance? There's, it looks like a temporary structure has been erected in that parking lot.
Um, there is a new water treatment shed. Does it look like a shed? It's not a large structure?
Pretty large shed.
Yeah, I know they just finished that. That's a water treatment facility that-
For discharge?
Yeah. It's going to continue to treat the discharge from the old site.
Okay. That would make sense.
Any other questions?
That's where it all runs. Right. No? Thank you.
Okay.
So we have a couple of items for active subdivisions. One of them, you don't have the request in front of you, but it's a request to release all of the bond for the River Ridge subdivision. That was a subdivision that was approved, accepted at town meeting. So all the materials, everything has been completed, everything has been submitted. We just neglected to take that step. So I would need a vote from the board to release the bond for the River Ridge subdivision.
What is the remaining bond, Gabby?
Excuse me?
What is the remaining bond value?
Uh, it is. I think it's fifty-seven, um, fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars.
And everything's substantially complete?
Everything is completed.
Okay.
Yeah. We, the town doesn't, they, they finished everything, so.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we release the final bond on the River Ridge subdivision in the amount of fifty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is, you do have in front of you, it is the decision for 357 South Street subdivision. We held a hearing on June 27th and the board requested that we work out the conditions.
Right.
And we met with their attorney and Mr. Buckley, and we've come up with the, with the conditions that are in front of you. So I would like for you to let me know your thoughts.
Okay. I did review the tape of that meeting and I'm completely up to speed on it. And I'm fine with the changes in the conditions as they're written here. Any more questions?
Uh, no. I mean, I have not reviewed this document. I certainly am familiar with what we had discussed and if you're satisfied that-
Yeah, it's in line with what was discussed.
Yeah.
We just need a motion to approve.
Can't make a motion to approve the special permit definitive subdivision for Cindy L. McKay from 357 South Street.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I need a second vote for the subdivision approval.
Subdivision approval?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion to approve the definitive subdivision plan for 357 South Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Being approximately, do you want me to jump to this, Gabby, or?
Uh, with the action items?
I was going to go to the public hearing, but-
Oh, is it 7:10?
7:10. We can go to the action items.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
Being approximately 7:10 PM, continued public hearing, special permit, 73 Main Street, construction of an eight-unit multifamily dwelling, Briarwood Construction Corp. Applicant has requested a continuance to September 26th, 2024.
Yes.
And make a motion that the board grant that request for a continuance to September 26th, 2024.
Okay. Do we have a time definitive on that, or?
Um, we'll do 7:15.
7:15, okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we can do the action items.
Um, the first item that we have is an A&R plan for 310 Coacasset Street. This is a land swap between neighbors. It is, uh, people that were, um, have a pre-existing non-conforming lot and would like to create a, build a garage, but they needed, have to have access through a easement with the neighbors. There was some issues with that and they had to go in front of the zoning board of appeals. All of the changes have been approved by the zoning board, but now they need approval for the land swap.
So just for clarification, they're getting a piece of parcel A? Is that what it is?
So, um, so the, the small house, which is the 310 Coacasset Street, which is Beverly Christiansen's house-
Yep.
-that is getting parcel B.
Parcel B.
So it's that triangular piece to the right. And then the home behind it, which is 1 Stockbridge Road, is getting parcel A. And the reason, as Gabby pointed out, um, they would want, they want, 310 Coacasset Street would like to build a garage, so they couldn't fit one in there because of the location of the property line. As Gabby pointed out, this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot, 310 Coacasset. So what this did is it made it a little bit more conforming as far as frontage and it didn't make it any less conforming regarding area. And 1 Stockbridge continues to be a conforming lot and it was approved by the zoning board of appeals.
And so 1 Stockbridge goes all the way out and includes that drain easement?
A piece of it.
Piece of it.
Little bit, see the triangle, parcel B?
Yep, yep.
So it includes a piece of it.
Wow.
Yeah, Stockbridge, 310 Coacasset was always a tiny lot.
Yep.
It actually was made bigger when the subdivision was created and now it's made, you know, a little bit bigger as well. It only had 70 feet, I think it was 70 feet of frontage, it was 75 when it was originally created back whenever.
I don't see a problem with it.
Yep.
Gary?
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it.
Top?
Be straightforward.
Motion to approve it?
Uh, I'd make a motion that we approve the A&R plan for 310 Coacasset Street applicants, John and Helton and Beverly Christiansen, Helton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I think we have another one.
Yes, we do. Okay, Mr. Buckley, would you like to explain?
Sure. So I'm going to share my screen here. So what this is, let me make it a little bit bigger. Maybe too big. So what this is, is, um, this is Hamilton Square. So if you take a, you're on Chestnut Street, Mechanic, take a right at the St. Mary's, immediately pass that is Hamilton Square. So those apartment buildings that have been there forever that butt up against the Ahern School. So over here on the left, where my little hand is, this is the Ahern School. So these, this lot was created, I'm not even sure when. I think it was back in the 60s or 70s. And in, it included, if I can, I'm going to share another, let me share another drawing which will show it better, I think. So this plan is, I think, shows it a little bit better. Let me zoom in. So if you're coming down Chestnut Street, this is from Mechanic, is Hamilton Square. You can see this, and it's listed as parcel A. So let me zoom out a little bit. So it's very odd. So this was the property line. You can follow my hand. It goes here, goes past Hamilton Square, the last lot, comes up, cuts in the back and then runs like this. And you can see that a lot of this parking and some of these accessory things are not on the property. So they're on a different piece of property than the buildings. It's all owned by the same-
Right.
-people, but it's a different piece of property. So now what we're doing here is we're going to cut out a piece over here because this is 100 feet of frontage, which is all you need in the R-15 district. So we're going to cut out one lot. I'll show it to you in a moment, it's in front of you. And that lot will be a standalone lot. And then the remainder of the lot, what's shown as parcel B, will now be combined with parcel A. And all of the improvements that support Hamilton Square will now be on the same lot. So there's still two conforming lots-
Yeah.
-but we're just cleaning it up. If that makes sense, let me-
How would that have happened?
Don't know. Maybe just because it was the same ownership-
Yeah.
-maybe they thought back then, whenever they allowed that, to do it. Because I think that expansion in the back was-
A second phase?
-subsequent to the original one, yeah.
Right.
I mean, if I remember, as long ago as I can remember, and you guys know, that's always been the way it is now.
Right.
So I don't know when those improvements were made. Definitely before the 70s. But let me share again, the actual Form A.
So Bill, are they going to look to develop this new parcel?
I'm sure that's what their ultimate goal is. But all they can do is, it has to be a single family or a duplex.
Right, right.
Because it's, it doesn't have the frontage. So let me just, so this gives you a feel, it's a different orientation, it's north is up, but this is the way toward Mechanic. Here's the last building for Chestnut Square. And you can see, this is what we're cutting out. So what you're really creating today, the new lot that you're creating, is off of that 100 feet and includes this land in here. And all the rest of these improvements will be on what we're calling parcel B1, which is a non-buildable, non-conforming lot. But that, I'm guessing, will be eventually combined with this lot as well. So this is what we're creating is B2 and parcel B1 is non-buildable, non-conforming.
So Bill, you had just said that you would, you presume that those lots will be combined. So is it just something that's been talked about, or is that something that is going to happen?
So what the deal is, is, and what I've been told by their attorney is, there's a loan, there is some type of lien on where all the apartments are. So they're not necessarily going to do it right now to combine it, but it's, right now it's a non-buildable lot and it's abutting that other parcel. So the idea was, they spent a lot of time with Frank and they, there's no permits. We've looked for all the permits down at the, the planning board has no permits, CBA has no permits, and the building inspector. It's very minimal. So we don't really know, like, how this was built. Even back in the 70s, you couldn't do stuff like that. They still had the multifamily. So we don't really know how it was done. So what Mr. Spillane's idea thought is, is to max out, to give the, give the, this possible B1 enough area that, based on the number of units, which I don't know off the top of my head, in our current zoning, this has enough area and frontage to conform as far as area and frontage goes. Now, when you have multiple buildings on a lot, it's not allowed in Foxborough. You can't have multiple buildings, you can't have multiple residential buildings on a lot. So, but it exists already, we don't know why. It's just, it's just kind of how we are. But really, the lot that we're creating that we expect to be built on or sold is parcel B2.
Right.
Parcel B1 also, just so you know, is almost, probably 80% wetlands.
Okay. And you said that only the max, max out on B2 would be a duplex?
B2 is a duplex for two reasons. It doesn't have enough area-
Right.
-and it doesn't have enough frontage because it needs to have 125 feet of frontage because it abuts a single-family house, which is the Ladones. So that's all it can be, a single-family or a two-family. It can't apply for a, can't even apply for a special permit. Doesn't comply for area or frontage.
Is all that accurate, Gabby?
Absolutely. I agree wholeheartedly.
Okay.
I concur.
I wasn't even supposed to be here. This is Rich's job.
With Rich.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for stepping in. Rich Leslie spent quite a bit of time with me yesterday coaching me on this plan and then I wasn't here.
From what I heard, it sounds okay. I mean, it's not like they're going to look to expand into the B1. Don't think they'll ever be able to, so.
No.
By doing the A&R, we clean up what's currently there as far as the way it's laid out and they do get to carve out a small parcel that would accommodate a duplex at max, so.
Right.
Just a quick question on how you make the Ladones. So how were those dimensions determined?
So, I think what they did, and I'm just, this is secondhand because I wasn't part of it, is, I know Frank sat down, I was in the meeting, we were at the meetings with the owners, and he went through the zoning and based on the number of units that are there. So Foxborough zoning is, I forget, it's the first three units is like 36,000 square feet and then it's like 6250 for every one thereafter. So based on the number of units, which I, I don't know off the top of my head, I'm going to guess 90. But, um, that's how he came up with the number. So that, that area, if you combine B1 and A, that has enough area under our zoning as far as the number of units density. But as I said, it doesn't, it doesn't comply with other things. And then the remainder just went with this parcel B2.
So just, I'm a little bit confused. But would that, after, I presume you're talking about after those lots were combined, right?
If they were combined, then they would have enough-
And that would, that would make this plan conforming in terms of just the density alone? There might be other things that still make it non-conforming?
Yes, that's my belief. It would be conforming for area and frontage, which it already is conforming for frontage.
Yeah.
Other things, like I know, I know it's not conforming because of the number of buildings on a lot, if this was built under our zoning, but it might have been built under a, some type of zoning relief or comprehensive permit, I'm not really sure.
Okay. So it's not just like this B2 was just an arbitrary line, there was some thought putting, put into that?
It's the remaining land after we took out enough.
Okay.
I'm not going to get it any worse, I don't see a problem with it.
Bill, do you know if there's any thought for even minor expansion into what you have to note that there is the wooded area behind the vinyl fence?
Up here?
Dumpsters, yeah.
I mean, they have, they have stuff over there, like a playground and things like that, but that, I don't see how they could do anything-
Okay.
-without zoning relief. It's, they can't even, in my opinion, they can't even come to the planning board with a special permit. They need zoning relief in order to do anything over there. And actually, I think that shed, I think there's shed down on the corner?
Yep.
I think that was zoning relief granted for that, or maybe it was a special permit granted by the board because for a multifamily, for a multifamily structure, you can have an accessory building, but it's by special permit of the planning board. So I think that was a special permit that was granted by the Foxborough Planning Board and not that, not that long ago either. So I'm not even sure how they put it on a separate lot.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know what was said.
One last question, since we're going down memory lane here. So originally, and this is just speculative because I'm sure you don't know definitively, or maybe you do. So why would, since it was under common ownership, why would this larger parcel have been split up in the first place?
I don't know. I don't even know when it was created. I think it was back in the 60s. I know, I saw the old plans and all of this land, all the way out to the Ahern School parking lot was owned by one person.
Yep.
So it was split up into the, I think where the Ladones live was the homestead. And then they split it up into one, two, and then if you go past Ladones, there's two apartment buildings-
Yep.
-you go past them, they're sideways. And they were all done on that one parcel, cut out, again, back in, I think it was in the 60s. I have the Form A somewhere, but I didn't bring the file.
Just kind of interested. Well, should we approve this?
Well, the plan does meet the frontage and the area and has appropriate access. Those are the three items for the board to consider when signing a Form A plan.
That being the case, I'd make a motion that we approve the A&R plan for 147 Chestnut Street, parcel B2 on a plan submitted by Bay Colony Group.
Do we have a second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, request for minor modification, Ridge Road subdivision.
Speak.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Bill Buckley. I'm here representing FedCap Inc. And we're here before the board to request a minor modification to the subdivision, which we called Ridge Road, and it's been renamed by the selectmen as Eisenhower. I think it's lame. But I don't, I don't, I don't have the drawing, I think you have a separate drawing that you just showed me. But what we're here for tonight is, so when we started the design of this, we actually asked the board to grant two waivers. First waiver was, we asked for a profile more than 8%, thank you, a profile more than 8%, or a grade more than 8% going into the site, where the town's maximum is 6%. And then the other one had to do with a detention basin, a stormwater basin, in a side yard. So what we've found, and let me just back up. You know, when we did that, what we're doing, when we're doing our design is, we're guessing, when I say we, I mean the engineers. We're guessing where the homes are going to be, we're guessing the sizes, and, you know, we're trying to make things the best possible design. And what happened, and in this particular case, in most cases, it's not that critical, because it's, most sites are relatively flat. And when you're dealing with a relatively flat site, eh, grades are not that important. You just try to get below, say, the top couple of feet, so you're stripping that out anyways, you can't build on it, so you want to get below that. And then maybe you want to go below, sometimes you have to go above. But it's not that critical thing. In this particular case, though, what we found is, we guessed wrong. Because this site, if you've been down there, I'm sure you've driven by it, this is on, this is a hill. So if you're standing on Ridge Road, it's a hill in front of you, and it falls off in every direction. So the top of the hill falls off to the left, and the right, and the back, all those directions are toward the reservoir, and then toward the street, it falls off. And what we found is, you know, the realtor, the reality of the market now is, the homes are going to be much bigger than what we estimated, and they're going to be in a different grade. So what we would have to do, in order to try to keep the houses at the same elevation as the road, because that's what you want, we were going to be bringing in, you know, eight, eight feet of fill, just to put the foundations at the grade we want it to be. We're just going to make the backyard steeper. So what we did, we went out there, we met with, it's under construction, we met with the contractor, we met with the owner. The owner already knows what kind of houses he wants to sell and build, because he's been talking to brokers and buyers. And we came up with a new grading plan that would bring the site down. So if you look at the drawing that Gabby just handed me, that you guys have, what we're showing you is the original grade, which was at an 8% grade, and then our proposed grade, which is a 3.4. So what we're doing is actually bringing this grade into compliance, and we're bringing it down. Now, if I was sitting when you're in your position, I would say, is this a gravel removal operation? Because the gravel is spectacular out there. It is not a gravel removal operation. We perceive, we see none of this material leaving the site. It's being used on the different, on the lots on the outside, in order to grade those lots, in order to not have to bring material into the site, which is what we were talking about before. So really, that's the purpose of this. Neither of the drainage basins have changed, we've not changed any of the drainage. At the top of the hill, at the cul-de-sac, we changed the grades of the drainage, but the configuration is the same, because we're dropping it, so we had to change the grades. But everything is still going into that basin on the back end of the project. And then everything in the front is still going into the basin that's off to the left, as you look at it from Ridge Road. So that's why we're here, asking for that minor modification of the road. It's, we're not bringing, we're not bringing it any closer to the, to the reservoir, we're not changing the drainage basins, which are the closest thing to the reservoir. The material is not leaving the site, it's going to be used on the site. It's just, after the fact, once the reality of what's actually going to be built there, it just seems to be, it's a better design for what we're, what's going to be there.
Does this affect the order of conditions on this project?
No. All of this is outside of the 100-foot buffer. We have to file, excuse me, we're going to be filing for all four of these lots, because either the house, or at least the grading in the back of these houses, is going to be within the 100-foot buffer zone.
Yeah.
But we're not going to file until we, we know, first of all, to listen to the board here, see if we're okay with this. And then the next thing is, is we want to, we want, I want, I want to be pretty sure what the house and grading is going to look like, before we go asking, going before conservation, because we don't want to have to go back. So that's, that's when we'll go into conservation. For none of this, it doesn't impact anything, it was approved by them under the roadway order of conditions.
And just to refresh my memory, this is projected to be a public way?
Yes. We have not heard back from, we sent this to Lance a couple of weeks ago. Excuse me, I talked to Gabby tonight, and I know he's crazy busy, as you can tell, driving around town. So we haven't heard back from him yet.
Well, I would think this would be perceived as an improvement.
Yes, what Phil and I talked about, what we would like to propose is that the board, if they wish, to approve this, to vote with the caveat that we get the sign off from the town engineer.
Makes sense.
Now, Bill, in doing this, you'd actually be slowing down any runoff as well.
Right.
Which will, will help infiltration.
Yep. And that's what Mr. Peterson was talking about, when we're doing our original, you know, we worried about the water coming down the road.
Mm-hmm.
So this drops the slope, and actually, and just what you just said, it improves it, because it's, because the water takes longer to get there, because the slope is less.
Right, right.
So the time of concentration, which is one of the variables, is slowed down, which means you have a lesser, smaller amount of runoff.
Do we have any other comments from the board?
No, good.
I'd make a motion that the board approve the request for a minor modification on Ridge Road subdivision. That's sort of a generic title, but I forget the actual title.
Also known as Eisenhower Lane.
Eisenhower Lane, yes.
Contingent upon approval from our engineering.
Correct. Engineering department.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have minutes from the June 27th. I'm not sure if anybody had a chance to look at them. If you'd like to take more time, we can consider them at the next meeting.
You ready, Gary? You ready on those minutes?
Yes, I am, thank you. Motion to approve the minutes for June 27th, 2024.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I would like to request for the board to consider continuing the public hearing scheduled for 7:20. Our engineers are still conducting the peer review, so we'd like to continue to September 12th meeting.
So moved. Do we have a time?
Uh, 7:30?
7:30, okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Whitehouse?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Being a little after 7:15, STM zoning discussion, discuss articles to submit for special town meeting.
Thank you. As of now, the Department of Land Use and Economic Development has three items that we have submitted as placeholders for the next warrant for the special town meeting, which will take place on November 18th. The first one is MBTA communities. We're hoping to submit some articles regarding the adoption of a compliant zoning district under 3A of the zoning act, and then the residents will be able to vote on that. The second one is accessory dwelling units. There was some new language that came up in the state regulations regarding the Affordable Homes Act. And that will require some, some minor but significant updates to our current accessory dwelling units regulations. So that language will be going up for vote at special town meeting. And finally, the rezoning of 69 and 75 Central Street to general business with the Foxborough Center Overlay District. This is the existing senior center. While the departments that are housed there are moving to the new community center, a discussion was held internally about what would be the best use of that property once the town puts it out to bid. It was, it was arrived at that general business with the Foxborough Center Overlay District provided the most flexibility for the parcel. That way, it could maintain its function in a nonprofit capacity potentially. It could be a, you know, a business or a couple of businesses, given the size of it. And finally, with the overlay district, it could be up to three multifamily units could be added to the site in some capacity. So it just gives a little bit more flexibility to whoever might wish to purchase and redevelop that property. Do we need any, anything from them at this point in time, or after the articles are developed?
Yeah, I think that, you know, we have a placeholder, so we'll need, I think, once we have a little more concrete, then have them vote to refer the articles to the select board.
Okay. Great. But if you have any questions in the meantime, please reach out.
Yeah.
Yeah, who is the property owner next door?
It is currently, it's a small multifamily. I don't, I don't unfortunately have written down the name of the owner.
You had mentioned, I don't know if it was deliberate or not, you had said that you were looking at articles relative to the MBTA.
Mm-hmm.
And so that would lead townspeople to think that we're developing a multi-site plan?
My hope is to be able to present two options at town meeting. I discussed it with the town council, and he agrees that that can be a viable approach. So given the feedback that I receive...
It would be two articles, then?
Yeah. Given the feedback I receive, I'll have an option A and an option B for discussion and vote. Of course, people will retain the ability to vote no across the board.
Didn't the state just approve some small mini housing?
So why not look at that?
Not accessory, but like in-laws type of...
Yeah, the accessory dwelling units, yeah.
Yeah, that's what you were talking about.
Oh, is that, okay.
Correct.
Something else, okay.
Well, no questions at this time.
You will have to share...
We reserve our right to ask questions.
I'll have to share my what?
Your information with us on the MBTA.
Yeah, I will, as it develops. My approach is really going to be, like, putting out sites that, you know, hope to speak to what I'm hearing from the residents, which is, right now, mitigate the impact, try if you can to slow any implementation, which I completely understand, because the absorption of the number of units a state is requiring us to zone for is significant. So I'm going to, I'm going to probably go piece by piece of areas that have higher density already, and we'll discuss the pros and the cons and strategies, and see, see where we can get, and whether or not people are, I guess, not completely turned off by either one of the options, I'm hoping. But yeah, it'll be, it'll be a very open, transparent process as it goes along, all the open meetings, as well as, you know, I'm doing a lot of economic impact analysis, as well as some gross density calculations, and discussing with my department heads what certain increases to services and infrastructure might look like. So we're having all those conversations right now.
Okay. Is there any discussion at the state level? Because there's, you know, two or three towns that are fighting them, and is there any movement from the state at all?
Well, we did review the brief that Milton just submitted, and we read through that this week. And they did make some salient points regarding the legislation being more vague in its tone, and the interpretation of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. They added a lot of framework that wasn't necessarily in the legislation. So there is a possibility that they made a strong enough case that the courts can at least partially lift some of the requirements or modify them somehow. But I'm not a lawyer, and we need to wait for the courts to answer that. What I think is a strong argument may or may not be.
Milton's a very interesting case, though, in comparison, because we are officially an MBTA community now. Milton is not.
Yeah, they're considered a rapid transit community, and they were actually, that was one of their arguments, was that they should not be considered a rapid transit community. Yeah. But that one doesn't apply to us, but some of the other items definitely do. They apply to all the communities that are affected by it.
And I think it's going to be a long road, but...
And we'll be monitoring it throughout.
Yeah.
Well...
And we, as a board, are here to help you, so. I did tell Gabby that conversation, that if you need anything, just reach out to us, because we don't mind.
Sure. I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else, other than signing all the mylaws?
I was going to say, motion adjourned and sign some plans.
Do we have a second? Mr. Whitehouse?
Yes, you do have a second.
Okay. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.